So hello and welcome to the show. My guest is Dr. Michael Rinaldi, Simsbury resident for 43 years and is currently looking for your support in his quest to become part of the Board of Education. And so let's get to know Mike a little bit. Mike, you're a doctor.
Yeah, I'm a retired interventional cardiologist. I practiced interventional cardiology for approximately 33 years at Hartford Hospital and then also at John Dempsey Hospital, retiring in 2012. Basically, I became interested in cardiology as a lifelong pursuit and after retiring, I basically have devoted myself to mainly educational projects.
You have a family and they...
Yeah, my wife and I live at Pinnacle Mountain and we have two children, Michael and Susanna, both attended Simsbury School System. And my son is a physician right now and my daughter is a graphic designer.
That's great. So somebody told me there's a picture of you in Hartford Hospital on the Wall of Fame. You explain that a little bit.
Yeah, I think it was 1981 when we started doing coronary angioplasty. It was introduced in the United States from Dr. Grunsick in Zurich, Switzerland. And I was one of the first members of that team that learned how to do coronary angioplasty. And I did the first procedure in 19, I think, 81. And that was one of many that I did over the years.
That's wonderful. That's great. So the shift from medicine to education. Now, why are you seeking the nominee, the election?
Well, when you're in the profession of medicine, you really are a student for life and you're a teacher for life. When I was in my residency program, I taught medical students. And when I was in my fellowship at Boston, at Harvard, I taught Harvard medical students. And while I was in practice, I taught fellows both at Hartford Hospital and John Dempsey Hospital. I actually, excuse me, I actually started the fellowship program in interventional cardiology at Hartford Hospital. And so being interested in education is my lifelong pursuit.
That's great. So, and you're right now thinking about the Simsbury Board of Education. Explain to me why in one of your dialogues here that I received, you said that you would want to give people a choice. Now tell me about that choice. What's that? That's a great word. What do you mean by a choice?
Well, after living in Simsbury for approximately 25 years and voting every time for the election of the Board of Education, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and other boards, I noticed that I had very little, if any, choice in voting for the Board of Education. The two political parties would nominate two people each term of every two years. And I noticed that those people never changed. And when I went to vote on the ballot, it said vote for any two, but all four always got elected. So I really have no choice. And since the Board of Education spends 80% of our tax dollars, I think we ought to have the ability to choose the people who are on the Board of Education. Not only do they provide a quality education for our student body, which is obviously apparent. Everybody knows that Simsbury has one of the better school systems in the state, but also to make that system responsible to the voters. And therefore, I believe that the people who go to the polls to vote ought to have a choice of voting for a particular candidate. And when you go to the polls to vote and there are four candidates and they tell you to vote for two and all four get elected, that's not an election and that's not democratic. That's basically what I call a popularity contest. And I think that in this day and age, especially when tax dollars are very limited as far as when you look at what's happening at the state level, we ought to be able to ask our members of the Board of Education to be responsible to the taxpayers as far as how they construct their budgets.
So you're looking at that as a way to kind of like, not limit, but to decrease the cost of running a board?
Yes. I really believe that.
And how would you go about doing that? I mean, what would be the...
Well...
So are you saying to eliminate one or two of those people?
No, 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 no. Let me be clear.
Okay.
The Board of Education does an excellent job.
Yep.
The people who administer the system do an excellent job. The teaching staff at Hartford, I mean, at Simsbury does an excellent job. The problem is that over the past 10 years, we've had a marked decrease in enrollment. And that decrease in enrollment hasn't been sufficiently given back in dollars to the taxpayers. So what's happened over the past 10 years, our per pupil costs have exceeded every other DRG in a school in our, in our, in our system. So therefore, I believe that we ought to make the system at least a little bit more cost effective as far as how we introduce, how we introduce programs and policies.
The, how do you... All right, let's go back to this. Your Simsbury already has per pupil costs in the means of 169 towns in the state. And why do you believe it could be better here?
Well, when I first moved to Simsbury 43 years ago, the Simsbury School System had a per pupil cost that was 129 of 169 towns. It was a very efficient, efficiently run system. And we also had one of the top school districts in the state. We've always had an excellent rating in our school system over the past 43 years that I've been in town. What's happened during these past 43 years, but especially over the past 10 years, due to decreased enrollment in our system, we have not sufficiently downsized the system in order to make it more cost effective.
I see.
So therefore, when we look at all the other towns in the state of Connecticut, we still are ranked somewhere between 97 and 99 out of 169 towns, which makes us more better than the mean. But we still have shown a marked increase in our per pupil costs over the past 10 years because the decreased declining enrollment hasn't been basically been cost effective to the town.
And what's the difference in redistricting and redesigning the school system? How would that improve or make the system more effective?
Well, well, approximately 12, 10 years ago, there were two studies done. One was a study that was commissioned by the Board of Education and it was called the demographic study and long range of planning of the school facilities of Simsbury. And the other one was a long range plan studied done by Peter M. Pravda in 2011, which was the Simsbury Public Schools enrollment projection to 2021. The school system had the data over the past 10 years that they knew that there was going to be a dramatic decrease in enrollment. The school system had a number of choices to make during this time. In fact, a study was done, the demographic study and long range school facilities planning that gave the system three choices. Of the three choices, the board chose the first choice, which was not to close a school and not to redistrict. And the reason for not redistricting was they didn't want to change the students to a different school system. However, that's been shown in the past that if you redistrict around the edges, just a few students, especially those who are getting on a bus, it doesn't change the quality of the education or the experience those children have. It just maintains class size and therefore reduces the amount of cost per student. And that is basically one of the problems we have now is that our, our per pupil costs have exceeded every other school system in our DRG. Our proportional increase has increased, not necessarily our cost, but our proportional increase over the past 10 years has increased.
Can I ask you a question about this choice student increase? Why not use choice students to increase income from the state?
Well, choice students come to the town of Simsbury.
What is a choice student?
A choice student is basically a student mainly from Hartford. Kids who are somewhat disadvantaged by location. To send them to a high-class, high-performing school system like Simsbury to give them a better chance. And Simsbury has always participated in this program. And with the declining enrollment, instead of decreasing the amount of staffing we have in our system, and it's, we decided to increase the amount of choice students because they came with a particular amount of state funding. The problem here is not are we, am I or are we for choice students coming to Simsbury? I'm for that. I think diversity is a great thing for our school system. But the motivation was not to bring choice students because that was the best option for educating children. It was basically to capture the money that they would bring. It was sort of like, you got the right means, but you got the wrong end.
Right.
And so therefore, instead of downsizing the system, we've used choice students to increase the student body enrollment, thereby not decreasing the staffing that we have available for our school system.
Well, I see, I see the problem. So do you think that there's some way of improving that whole dynamic where the money still comes, but it's, it's not from, from that source? Or why is it that you're not really for that? I mean, I, I get that what you're saying is that there's a, there's money being allocated for this, this choice student that is there. Now, if we don't use it, does it go away? Is that the reason they're saying, oh, we got to use it? Or is it something that says, hey, this is a great way to fund what already is a great school in Simsbury and add to the, to the kid?
Let me give you some concrete examples.
Okay.
Okay. Approximately five or six years ago, the Simsbury School System decided to do all-day kindergarten. Now, I was a proponent of all-day kindergarten before the board even considered that. How, and the reason for that is my sister is a kindergarten teacher and she told me the benefits of all-day kindergarten. However, in order to institute all-day kindergarten, approximately $400,000 or $500,000 of new money would have to be allocated. And in order to get that money, the Board of Education would have to go to the Board of Finance and go to the public to increase their budget. I believe at the time, the board and the Simsbury School System felt maybe that wasn't what they could possibly get through at the time. So they decided to take upon themselves to increase the amount of choice students from 2% to 4% per year, which would add an additional $250,000 to $300,000 of new money, plus the little bit of money that the, that the, that the Simsbury system had in their budget, they could do all-day kindergarten. Well, that was a good way to increase diversity. It was a good way to maintain enrollment, but it was not a cost-effective way. Because if we funded the program with our own dollars over a 12- or 13-year period, as those children go through the entire grade system, we lose approximately $10,000 per student. And over a period of 13 years, and they took 40 students at that time at the preschool level, that's the equivalent of $5 million. That was a bad choice. Another choice was going to eighth grades at the high school. I'm all for going to eighth grades at the high school. But the way it was done was to squeeze those eighth grades into the allotted school day, which required adding more teaching staff. Because the Simsbury School contract called for teachers teaching five out of seven periods. And now they would be teaching five out of eight shortened periods and therefore having to hire more staff.
And I hear from the Simsbury resident that there are more administrators per pupil. Am I reading that right than other systems?
When I talk to people about education, especially education in Simsbury and the cost effectiveness of its system, I usually hear two questions that are questions they put to me for my answers. And one of the questions is, is we have too many administrators in Simsbury. Well, the fact of the matter is, we don't have too many administrators. We have approximately the same per pupil administrators as other systems in our DRG. The other problem is that I also hear that all the monies we spend on education, we can't spend enough. It's like a big hole. The more you throw into it, the more you'll get out of it. And the problem is that our per pupil costs are going up, but our quality of education is, is at a high standard. And it's hard to improve that by increasing our per pupil costs. So therefore, we have to lower our per pupil costs. And we have to basically be not only competitive, but we have to be competitive in a way that we are responsible to the taxpayers and that our dollars that are spent are not spent in a way that are not cost effective.
Recently, the Board of Education unanimously granted across the board a 2.6% increase in their salaries for the administration staff. Is that correct?
Yes.
What's your position on that?
Well, I have mixed feelings about that and let me explain. At the last Board of Finance meeting, the school board was asked to take an $800,000 cut in their budget. Their original budget presentation was for a 4.25% increase, which was decreased to 2.25% because of declining enrollment to take, to take advantage of that decreased enrollment by decreasing their budget. However, a 2.25% increase in budget is substantially higher than the CPI or the inflation rate, which for the past year has been about 1.7%. In fact, over the past 10 years, the Simsbury Board of Education budgets have been higher than the CPI, along with a yearly 2% decrease in enrollment per year. So over the past 10 years, we've had a 20% decrease in enrollment and our budgets have always gone up higher than the, than the CPI. Now, at the last Board of Finance meeting, the board was asked to take an additional $800,000 cut. They did it with reluctance. However, when the governor proposed his budget and it looked like Simsbury was really going to be short-changed, a lot of money on their grants to education. In fact, we get approximately $6 million. And the last governor request stated that we would get nothing. So the Board of Finance asked the Board of Education for an additional $400,000 decrease, which would bring it to a 1.2 million. The chairman of the Board of Education rejected that proposition, saying that it would, it would harm the school system, it would make it difficult for the Board of Education to do its job in maintaining a quality educational system. However, the Board of Finance actually, over and above the Board of Education request, reduced the budget to a total of $1 million. And it was felt by everyone that this would be a very difficult budget in order to continue to give the students of Simsbury the education that all of us in Simsbury require. Now, at the last Board of Education meeting, the Board of Education gave the top administrators of our school system, these are the people who have the highest salaries in our system, a 2.5% raise, which is 43% higher than the CPI. And at least one member of the board thought that raise should be higher. Now, that is not a big budget item as far as how much money is, would have to be allocated for this raise. It's in the $10,000 to $20,000 range. But what it does, it just gives a bad feeling of we're cutting our budget over $1 million and we're talking about decreasing staffing and eliminating programs. And here we are giving the top earners in our system a raise that's higher than the CPI in a very difficult time in our budgetary process.
Who suffers with the money when it doesn't come in or when we're not... Is it the teachers? Is it the students? Who suffers the most from, from the lack of funds in the...
Everybody does, actually. Remember...
Well, I'm saying the most. I mean, there's the student body and then there's the teachers. And each one of them, you know, the student body requires a number of dollars to get its due, whether it's in the teaching of a certain subject that is now being cut out. Who knows? And then there's the teacher who actually has a salary, a dollar assigned to them. So, but there's an expenditure to the student. Are you saying that, that when they decrease, they're going to decrease some of the things that would ordinarily be provided to students?
That's correct.
And then the teachers as well are going to get no increases in their salaries or...
Well, the teachers are protected by...
A union?
Their contract, okay? So teachers are going to get what's, what they bargained for in their contract. And the problem is, is that the students are mainly affected.
Yeah.
Because programs would have to be eliminated.
Right.
Class sizes would have to be increased. That's, and, and some of the programs would not only have to be decreased, but eliminated. Now, that doesn't mean that some couldn't be eliminated or even decreased to make the system more cost effective. But you like to be able to do that, not because you're forced of, forced by the, by the state not giving us the dollars. You like to be able to do that with your own dollars and make the cuts that you believe are necessary, rather than having to make the cuts because the state refuses to give you the money that's allocated for your system. It's a matter of the reason for making the cuts. Is the reason because the state's not giving you the dollars? Or is it the reason that you're cutting funding to the system because you think it needs to be cut? And you can make the cuts where you think they're necessary, rather than being told by the state to do it across the board.
So Dr. Rinaldi, I understand that there's been a request for $43 million...
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, okay. $23 million allocated for the rehabilitation of the Henry James Middle School. And what do you think about that and how do you think that should go?
Well, I am a proponent of rehabilitating and putting the Henry James Middle School into the 21st century. School was built, I think, in 1957 and no real major improvements have been made until the past few years when we spent a couple of million dollars in making some minor improvements in, in lockers and some administrative offices, et cetera. But a study was done for the Board of Education and that study concluded that the school was deficient in a lot of ways. It lacked an auditorium, it lacked a media center, it lacked science, up-to-date science laboratories. It was just a school system that needed major improvements. And while I'm for that system, improvement, I think that even though that project was forwarded to the Board of Finance, the Board of Finance, because of the problems we're having now with our budgets, decided to put that off until another time. So within the next few years, when things improve, that project will have to come forward. My ideas on that project are a little different than what the present administration and Board of Education have thought about it. My feelings is that when you have tremendous decreasing enrollment, that is now encroaching onto the middle school and high school, that a total redesign of the middle school project ought to be undertaken. And that is, what I mean by redesign, it means moving the sixth grade into the middle school. It's been shown by many studies that that's a far better way to, to use the middle school than just making it a seven and eight grade venue. The problem is that there are a lot of advantages of incorporating the sixth grade into the middle... middle school. The advantages are far more than outweigh any of your disadvantages. And it would be basically a way to fully integrate sixth-grade curriculum into the middle school. That would be a great benefit to sixth graders. It's been shown, I said in many studies, that this is a far better way to provide that kind of an education for sixth graders.
And this is what you would do if you were on the board? With eight members, you being just one of them?
Yeah, well, that's always a problem.
How are you going to do this alone?
Nobody is going to, by himself, make a major change without support for all the rest. You have eight members, and the majority or almost all have to agree before any changes can take place. And that's the way it should be.
Why aren't there an odd number to break the tie? Something that's?
There doesn't need to be an odd number to break a tie. In every board that we have in town, whether it's the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Finance, they're even numbers. But they're elected in such a way that there can be a majority or minority representation, as well as an even split. We have an even split on the Board of Selectmen, we have a majority on the Board of Finance. But the Board of Education never can have a majority or a minority. It's basically because the way the two parties, system, have decided on the way that they will nominate members to that board. So the Board of, the Republican Town Committee and the Democratic Town Committee, basically nominate two people each for the four members on the board. And they tell you, like I said at the beginning, vote for any two, but all four get elected. Now, whether a majority or minority representation will make the board a better system, but it certainly would make it more democratic. However, a minority or a majority or an even split on the board has really nothing to do with the educational system. It just has to do with how those board members are chosen. As one member of a board, what I can offer is ideas. I can offer a conversation on those ideas. I could try to be a person who not only is an advocate for the school system, for students, but also an advocate for the taxpayers. I think the taxpayers have been left out over the past 10 years. I think the Board of Education has taken a position not to downsize, which obviously led to marked increase per pupil costs. And basically, all their budgets have been higher than the CPI, except for the last one, in which they were forced by the Board of Finance to cut their budget over $1 million.
Well, I think you've got some great ideas. So are other people out there looking to support you with questions or with whatever they?
I don't know how much support I have, to be quite honest. The only reason I decided to do this is because I would complain to people about how the system is run, how it's elected or appointed non-democratically, how the people had little voice in how the Board of Education was formed. And also, because in the past 10 years, it has not been as cost-efficient or effective as it could have been. Although our median per pupil costs are better than the mean, there's still a dramatic decrease from where they were a number of years ago. So when I discussed this with some of my friends, they said, why don't you do something about it? Well, there's not much you can do about it if you're not a member of the Board of Education. You can go to their meetings, and they'll listen to you, but nothing will get done. Because you have to have new ideas. And many people on the board have been there for years. And they're supported because the Simsbury system is a quality system. It's a great system. The people moved to this town because of the quality of our education. The idea is not to, in any way, diminish the quality of the system. It's how can we make it more cost-effective? That's why I'm running.
That's great. So people, if they were looking to support you in some verbal way, can contact you by email and give you their thoughts and ideas, and maybe you can run with that.
Be glad to talk with anyone.
Great. Well, we're going to run on the bottom of the screen, you're going to run your email for a little while during the credits. And your email being michaelmichaeljrinaldi@gmail.com, all lowercase. And I'm hoping that they'll, you know, contact you and give you some well-deserved support. I think you've got some great ideas.
Well, I'd be glad to talk to anyone, there's no question about that. But the real reason for making this petition candidate is even if I didn't get elected, at least we can start a discussion.
Exactly.
Of how did we get here? From where we were? Why are our per pupil costs accelerated so dramatically? And why didn't we do something about this, when a number of studies have shown, as I have pointed out, that this was predictable? In fact, the student enrollment will continue to decrease for another couple of years. But at some particular time, the school system is going to come back to its, not maybe to its former amount of students, but it will substantially increase. Because our Simsbury population is getting older, people will be moving out of these three- and four-bedroom homes, there's been a marked increase in rental units that are coming online. So we expect the number of students will migrate into our system in the near future. But that's probably within the next 10 years. But right now, we have the opportunity to make the system more cost-effective, and then we can prepare for the future. And redesigning the system, I think, is very important, to look at how the system should look like in the next 10 years.
I think that's great. All right. Well, if your viewers are interested in contacting Dr. Rinaldi, remember the email address. Send in your ideas, send in your views, and I'm sure that you will have some good luck, because I think you're presenting a well-thought-out piece of information that we all think about, that so many people are getting, you know, increases where other people are getting decreases. And there should be some sort of a balance in that system, one way to curb it. One of my thoughts on the subject is a lot of people are moving out of the state because of work, because of the way things are here in the state. So I do believe that our enrollment is going to be decreasing, unless we do something about everything in this state.
Well, you're absolutely right about that. Simsbury has become a very costly town to live in. In fact, if you look at the statewide cost of the state, if you look at the statewide cost of living in Simsbury, we are the 11th-highest taxed town of the entire 169 towns. And that's not a very good position to be in. And I think that's one of the problems, is that we have to be much more efficient in what we do. Because, as you said, the state of Connecticut is pretty much bankrupt almost. And you can see what's happening. They're not going to give back our tax dollars back to us to run our school system. And therefore, it's going to be a greater proportion of the tax dollars that we spend are going to have to be sent on the school system that we don't have. So this system has to be run as efficiently and as effectively as it can be.
Absolutely.
And every time we do a program, we have to look at that program as far as, not only is it a benefit, but its cost-effectiveness. Can it be done in a more cost-effective way? And I'll go back to all-day kindergarten as being a typical example of how it could be done in a more cost-effective way. So it's not only about making Simsbury a great town and have a great school system, but how can we do it so that it's more cost-effective and so that taxpayers can get a break, especially when you have such declining enrollment? So that's my basic reason for running.
Well, that's wonderful, and I wish you all a good luck. And to our viewers, I want to thank you for watching. And like I said, you want to contact him, his email is michaeljrinaldi@gmail.com. And thank you very much for being here.
Thanks.
And for your information.
Funding for Simsbury Community Television is provided in part by contributions from viewers like you. Thank you.